I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nettles.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 19th council meeting and the November 26th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, presentation of TV 199 awards. Mr. Landon.
Cindy is going to make this presentation for us tonight.
It's been a great year for the TV 199 video production team winning national awards. We have a table over to the left showing the six awards that were received this year by Tom Hanson, our video production coordinator, and Jason Gerallo, our digital communications coordinator. The most recent awards that we received came at the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors Annual Government Programming Awards. And the first place award that's there in the front that looks like a teardrop, sort of, that was in the community awareness category. And we won first place for our Bringing It In-House video, which is the video that we produced to highlight the city's savings in having city employees do work that was previously performed by contractors. And we also won second place in that same contest in the same category, community awareness, for our Trek It Out, the QR Code Project video, which showcases the QR codes that we're using at some of our parks and trails to tell people about things related to the environment. Earlier this year, the team also received three communicator awards from the International Academy of Visual Arts. And two of those were Silver Awards of Distinction in government relations. And that was also for the Bringing It In-House video and also for the video called Prosperity at Work Sports, which showcases our economic development initiatives related to bringing more sports tournaments to Palm Coast. And Tom and Jason also received a Silver Award of Distinction in the outdoor environmental category for the Trek It Out QR Code Project video. And that same video, the Trek It Out, also took top honors this year in the People's Telly Awards in the outdoor environmental category. And the telly awards are voted on by people who went online to YouTube, and it's the first time that we received a People's Telly Award. So that was very exciting. The team, as you know them at your meetings, sitting in the back, they actually produce more than 80 videos a year for the city. And we use them on our cable channel, on social media, and also for a variety of other ways to educate people in the public about what's happening in the city and to promote city special events. So I would like to call Tom and Jason up to have a picture with all of you at the table, if that would be possible.
Do you dare leave the equipment, both of you? Come on.
They have it.
Come on, councilmembers.
Please join us at the table. We'd love to have a picture. And the photo that's up on the screen shows all of the awards they've won over the years. And we keep these in the IT department on display.
You guys get in the middle.
Phil, get in.
All right, I'm going to take a couple. And as you guys know, I'm going to count. All right, ready? One, two, three. We'll do one more.
Did anything happen?
Yes. One, two, three. It looks kind of bright. Let me try one more. All right, one, two, three.
That's because we've got these two shining stars.
Three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you?
You should have taken my picture.
You guys want to say so?
I could just make a quick comment that we couldn't have accomplished all this that you see in front of us without the teamwork of all our staff and employees. The levels in which everyone chips in for scripting, for ideas, for creativity is fantastic. So we really want to thank staff and employees for each one of these projects that you see before you. We couldn't do it without them, so, thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much. You and Jason. Agenda item number three, an ordinance relating to future land use amendment for Graham Swamp area. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously amended. This is pursuant to Section 163 of the Florida statutes. It amends the future land use map, or FLUM designation, for approximately 3,300 acres of real property from agriculture and timberlands, conservation, mixed-use, and high intensity and residential low-density single-family, which are the Flagler County designations, to conservation, which is the City of Palm Coast designation. And this is all as depicted in Exhibit A to the ordinance, which is attached. And this provides for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor of City Council, you're going to see a number of housekeeping items tonight that are land use issues but don't have any development potential whatsoever. And this is the first one. Jose is going to give you a short presentation on this proposal.
Sure. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. This first item has to do with Graham Swamp area and an item that will affect its future land use and zoning map designation. As we recall, in 2011, the city annexed approximately 3,300 acres in what is most commonly known as the Graham Swamp area. And you see that area outlined in the red up there. As we know, mainly this area is used mainly for recreation. There's a number of trails there at the north end of Graham Swamp, as well as mountain bike trails at the southeastern end, as well as a portion of the Lehigh Trail, which goes through a portion of this Graham Swamp area. Graham Swamp itself is used as sort of a kidney for the city's drainage system. A lot of our stormwater comes through here before eventually being funneled out to the intracoastal. There is also a mitigation site here that's still owned by IT&amp;T, and I guess it was a requirement that they continue to maintain and administer until, for perpetuity. So the proposed amendments you have before you are, for the future land use map amendment... I'll use the arrow. This is the current designation of the Graham Swamp area. Currently retains the Flagler County designation. As you can see, at the north end, there's some remnant, probably at the time when these lands were still in private ownerships, and they've never been changed. So like here, you have a mixed-use, high-intensity designation, as well as a residential low-density single-family future land use map designation. But of course, mainly this Graham Swamp area is mainly owned by the St. John's River Water Management District, and of course is used mainly, again, as we previously described, for preservation and recreation uses. So what the proposed amendment is going to do is essentially take that full 3,300 acres and tag it with the city future land use map designation of conservation. And again, just bringing to light that this area is mainly for conservation, preservation uses, as well as low-impact recreational uses. Again, just putting on a map, identifying what it's really used for and what it's intended to be used for in the future. The other half of this proposed amendment is a zoning map amendment. Currently, you have areas within, this is the Flagler County zoning designation for the area. The darker areas are conservation areas, and the lighter areas are still tagged with the agriculture zoning designation. What we propose to do with the zoning map amendment is essentially to change that full 3,300 acres to preservation, which is consistent with the conservation future land use map designation. The findings is that the FLUM amendment, again, protects and recognizes the environmental and recreational significance of this area. There's going to be no additional demand on infrastructural facilities because essentially the future land use designation for this area will not permit any dwelling units or any non-residential development. With the zoning map amendment, again, the preservation designation is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan designation of conservation, and is also consistent with the Comprehensive Plan goal to protect, conserve, enhance, and appropriately manage and maintain or improve the quality of natural resources and environmental systems, which thereby contributes to the high quality of life and economic well-being of the city. Again, just recognizing the current uses of Graham Swamp and its intended uses in the future as a recreational and preservation area. Staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board both recommend that the City Council approve the proposed future land use map amendment and the companion zoning map amendment for the Graham Swamp area. I did want to mention that since this is a large-scale amendment, that is, an amendment that's over 10 acres, it will be, if approved at first reading tonight, we will send this amendment to the state for review by various state agencies.
Counsel questions? Mr. McGuire.
Jose, what changes as a result of the, of changing the FLUM here, or more particularly, what, if this does not pass, what's going to change? I mean, what are we really trying to do here?
What we're really trying to do here is that we're trying to recognize and document the appropriate, the future, the appropriate designation for this area. As you know, the Comprehensive Plan is a document that's adopted by City Council, and as such, I think we would want to have the most accurate information within that Comprehensive Plan document. And by changing the Flagler County designations, and since this parcel, of course, now is within the city, we need to give it the city designation and give it the city designation that recognizes its intended future use. So that's what we're having, and that's why we call it a house-cleaning item, is that we really need to clean our documents and make sure that they're, that they're most accurate.
I'll just add, Mr. McGuire, I'm sorry. Also add that it's also required by law that we eventually take the Flagler County FLUM designation, and now that it's incorporated into the city, that we utilize our future land use map and our zoning map.
Makes sense.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Either one. In terms of management, at one time, Flagler County had that responsibility and that sort of thing. And the, I guess, accordingly, the lands that the county, the St. John's people own, that's going to be transferred accordingly to the county. But we are pulling this into the city's orbit. So how was all those...
The management of this area will not change. There's an agreement, and I think when the transfer from the Water Management District to the county occurs, I'm sure that there will be an agreement as to how this area will be managed into the future, even though there's a change in ownership. Just because we brought this into, or has, the city annexed this area within our boundaries, that does not affect how we, how it's going to be managed. In fact, there was a, in a local agreement prior to its annexation, that basically laid out the rights and responsibilities for each party moving forward when this parcel got annexed.
And that will not, this will not cause that to be amended?
No, sir. No, sir.
Mr. Lorenzo.
Yes. Good evening, Jose. Are there any private lands here, or is this all public lands?
The affected area tonight are all publicly-owned lands.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there is one. I'm sorry, I'm not correcting that. There is that IT&amp;T mitigation area at the north end with that U, but that is a, this area, it is privately-owned, but it is a mitigation area and to be maintained as a mitigation area.
Okay. So while you have that map, or maybe one before that, you had some areas that had some density on them, right there, the blue part in the top-left corner?
Yes, sir.
But that's already in public land, so we're not downzoning any private property?
Right. You're not downzoning. It was probably, my guess, if I was to venture a guess, it was probably donated by IT&amp;T at some point as a mitigation parcel to the Water Management District for some other impacts that they might have had in another part of the city.
Okay. One other question. On Table 2 of your staff analysis, I think, which is our page 65, you can probably, I don't know if you need to refer to it really, Jose, to answer the question. Use a population, excuse me, use a population of 2.4 persons per dwelling unit to show the, or to estimate the maximum potential...
Sure.
Why 2.4?
2.4 is what we have in the Comprehensive Plan, what we typically use when we determine its impact on infrastructure, because that's what our data and analysis in the Comprehensive Plan show. But, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The counsel questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Actually, the presentation was on Agenda Item 3 and 4. They both are essentially the same issue. Anyone who wish to speak on this issue, please approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. And seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on Agenda Item Number 3?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Your Honor, that's 3 and 4, is it not?
We're going to do one at a time.
Okay.
Vice Mayor DeLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Now, Agenda Item Number 4. I assume you don't have any additional presentation?
No, no, sir.
Counsel, do you have any additional questions?
Move to approve.
Open the meeting to the public first.
Excuse me, I've got to read the title.
You're going to read the title? Mr. Reichman.
Got to have my little moment here, Mayor.
Moment of the sun, go for it.
Mayor, council, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for certain real properties consisting of 3,300 more-or-less acres, more particularly described in Exhibit A to the ordinance. And this is from agricultural conservation, which is a Flagler County designation, to preservation, City of Palm Coast designation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and an effective date. Mayor, this is, this, number 4, this ordinance is quasi-judicial, so if there's been ex parte communications, that would need to be disclosed.
Okay. Being quasi-judicial, are there any ex parte communications that you need to disclose?
None.
Nobody's approached you about this? Mr. Landon, do you have anything additional comments?
No.
Jose, no additional comments?
No, sir.
Any additional questions? We'll open the meeting to the public, anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number 4. And seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Now a move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DeLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 5, an ordinance affecting the future land use map for Flagler Palms Cemetery. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously amended pursuant to Section 163 of Florida statutes, amending the future land use map or FLUM designation for 9.8 more-or-less acres of certain real property from agricultural and timberlands, which is a Flagler County designation, to mixed-use or the city designation. It's described in more detail in the legal description and exhibit to the ordinance, providing for conflicts, ratification, and prior acts, codification, severability, and effective date.
Mr. Landon.
This is another housekeeping item. This is privately-owned property, but for obvious reason also has no development potential. But we're doing, designating the city FLUM tonight.
Sure. Good evening again. This one is for the Flagler Palms. And this is, again, a future land use map and a companion zoning map amendment. And again, I will just have one presentation for both the future land use map and the zoning map amendment. This area was annexed in 2009 by the city. It's approximately 9.8 acres. It's currently used, it has a 10,000-square-foot funeral home in addition to a cemetery on the site. And so essentially, what we're proposing to do is to take the agriculture and timberlands designation, which is the county designation, and change that to the city designation of mixed-use. For the zoning, we propose to take the agriculture, again, zoning designation, Flagler County designation, and changing that to a general commercial, COM2 designation. And I know it's unusual that COM2 would be the proposed zoning designation, but that is the zoning designation that permits the current uses that are found on the property. We don't want to create a non-conforming use, and so by designating it as general commercial, we continue to maintain that it is a conforming use within that zoning category. And it's also consistent, really, with some of the other adjacent zoning designations you'll find within the area. Of course, there is the Old Kings Elementary here, but north of that, and to the northwest of the property, you have some of those commercial uses. And then eventually, of course, we have an approved large-scale development that will eventually come in and develop, probably consistent with the uses that are found within this area. So again, the FLUM amendment, the net impact on the level of service for infrastructure and, there's no impact on level of service for infrastructure and public facilities. Again, the proposed FLUM just simply recognizes and permits the existing uses on the site. And in, in consistent with that, the zoning map amendment, the proposed zoning is consistent with the proposed FLUM designation, and again, the zoning recognizes and permits the existing uses on-site. Here, again, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommend approval of the proposed FLUM amendment and proposed zoning map amendment for this parcel. Now, in contrast to the previous amendment, which was greater than 10 acres, this is a small-scale amendment, meaning it's less than 10 acres, and as such, if this item is approved at first reading tonight, we don't have to transmit this item to the state agencies, and we can immediately go to the second reading at the next available city council meeting.
Counsel questions? Mr. Lewis.
For my identification, could you please tell me what is mixed-use in a cemetery?
Of course, mixed-use is a general category under land use category, a general. And it really entails, I don't know if that was a tongue-in-cheek question, Mr. Lewis.
I don't know that needed a response, Jose. It's a dead issue.
Oh, no.
It makes the map all red, is what Jose's answer is.
Yes, yes.
Just out of curiosity, under the, this facility pre-existed the incorporation of the City of Palm Coast, was the funeral home and cemetery built as agriculture or timberlands under the county designation? I mean, how does, how does that happen?
Well, I'll tell you, Mayor, that the agriculture zoning designation for the county, it's not really a straight agriculture zoning. There are a number of uses permitted within that zoning district that I think people will be really surprised is permitted, such as auto repair. It permits offices. It does permit, like, feed storage, which is an agriculture use, but it's retail, and it does permit cemeteries.
Okay. Thank you.
Question.
Mr. DeLorenzo.
You, I think you might be, have read my iPad, because you covered all my questions and, or most of them. The, I just want to be clear, this is a permitted use in COM2, or by special exception, or it's...
It's a permitted use. No special exception needed.
Okay, thank you.
The counsel questions?
You asked my question.
Seeing no other counsel question, we'll open the meeting for the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item 5 and/or 6, which is a combined, as the first 4 and 5 was, 3 and 4. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Moved and approved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DeLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Now the companion amendment, or companion ordinance, Agenda Item Number 6, an ordinance relating to zoning maps. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for certain real property consisting of 9.8 more-or-less acres, more particularly described in Exhibit 8 to the ordinance, from agriculture, which is the Flagler County designation, to general commercial or COM2, which is the City of Palm Coast zoning designation, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Mr. Landon, any additional...
This is quasi-judicial.
Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
Seeing none. Mr. Landon, anything else?
Nothing else.
Jose, anything else?
No, sir.
Counsel, any additional questions? Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number 6? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve.
Seventh. Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DeLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number 7, an ordinance, zoning map amendment for the FDOT waystation area. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for certain real property consisting of 33.8 more-or-less acres, as depicted in Exhibit 8 of the ordinance, from future development district and residential or commercial, which is Flagler County zoning designations, to public and semi-public, which is the City of Palm Coast designation, providing for conflicts, severability, and ineffective date. This is quasi-judicial as well, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
Seeing none. Mr. Landon.
This is another cleanup item. Our maps will be perfect once Jose gets finished with them here, I guess is what the goal is. It's all yours, Jose.
Thank you. This one is just the zoning, because as we go through the presentation, we'll see what happened here. This is a combined 33.8 acres. We essentially have two parcels that are, we're zoning two parcels that are, that is bisected by the I-9, the throughways of I-95. On the northbound side, you're, we're looking at about 12.3 acres. And then on the southbound side, we're looking at about 21 and 1/2 acres. And again, it's right on I-95, and it is the site more commonly known as the I-95 The site is designated as institutional on the future land use map. Institutional is the land use designation that basically names public and private uses, which are, and governmental uses. Again, it identifies areas for, again, public and private educational uses, public safety, transportation, and utilities building. As an example, most of our public facilities, such as our water treatment and wastewater treatment plant, are designated as institutional on the future land use map. So what happens, as we were, we received some inquiries, and we were looking at the zoning map, and we realized that on the zoning map, there is a big blank when, when looking at the waystation. So we went back and looked at the old Flagler County zoning maps and found that on the old Flagler County zoning maps, what you have is that on the, on the west side of I-95, the waystation area is designated as future development district, and on the east side of 95, the waystation area is designated as residential and commercial. What probably, this probably happened with, the only explanation is that maybe when converting the GIS maps, this was left out. And really, it's a, it's a map error, but in the interest of being more inclusive and going out, reaching out to the public again, since we... and going out, reaching out to the public again, since we adopted our 2008, our zoning map in 2008, and it's been some years, it probably really behooved staff to go back out to the public and make sure they understand it. This was an oversight. We could easily have corrected just by correcting the map without a public hearing, but in the interest of being more open, we are having a public hearing to say that we missed it the first time, but we caught it, and now we're going to designate it as appropriate on, on the zoning map. And so the zoning designation that would be consistent with the institutional land use designation is public and semi-public. Again, recognizes the uses, the use that is there, that recognizes that it's, it's a government function that's, that's going, that's, that is going on there. Again, so that public and semi-public is consistent with the existing flume designation, and again, the zoning district is consistent with its current use. Staff, again, and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendment.
Counsel, questions?
Jose, this has not anything to do with the flume or anything, but...
Yes, sir.
Does the FDOT pay any taxes to the city for the use of that land?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nice try, Bill. Mr. Lewis?
Just to follow up on that, FDOT or the state, they still own that land?
Yes, sir.
And, but because it is the state, they do not pay taxes?
That's correct.
To a municipality?
That's correct.
Do we have to get anything from FDOT as we change all this on the, on the amendment?
We've, we've had discussions with DOT, they're very aware of what we're doing here, that we're cleaning up our zoning map, and they've had no objections to our action here tonight.
Mr. Ferguson?
Jose, you said there, you've had some inquiries about this land for some developmental purpose, or what, what were you referring to?
Communication towers. Typically, we'll, we'll get inquiries from different, I guess they're like headhunters looking for sites for, for potential communications towers.
Would this site be conducive or be permitted for that use, potentially?
Not without a site plan, I probably couldn't answer that question fairly, Mr. Ferguson. I think we'd, we'd need to look at...
With a good, with a good site plan, get it, be permitted, would you think? I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, there's a tier of...
The consequences of going through this practice is...
They could put it here right now anyway. If they really, if they were intent on putting a communication tower at this site, the fact that it doesn't have zoning on it would not prohibit them from doing that, because we would just then have to rely on the future land use map designation, which is institutional in order to control the uses that are permitted there, so...
And if FDOT were to put up a communication tower for their purposes, that would be an institutional use?
It, yeah, we have a, our ordinance allows communication towers in a number of different zoning designations. And we have to go through a tier of review before we get to an approval.
But the property is owned by the state, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Just to follow up on, on the other question about the towers, there are federal regulations that address, will address this particular question?
Federal, you mean, communication towers?
Yeah.
We have in our code of ordinance, as well as our land development code, things that will control where you can place towers, but there are also federal regulations that control where and how towers are located and developed.
Thank you. But just, just to wrap this up, the inquiries, you referred to them as headhunters, those are private individuals looking for sites, not FDOT. FDOT has not proposed a communication tower.
Right, that, that is what we believe, yeah, who they are, yeah.
Other council questions? Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public, and if the public wished to be heard on agenda item number seven. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance amending the green development program. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, order repealing chapter 15, section 41, sunset of the code, ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, this is actually a second reading. We have a green incentive ordinance on the books right now, it actually has a sunset clause for 2014.
Correct.
And this lifts that sunset and allows it to continue. The next item, which is a resolution, actually designates the fee reduction for, for development fees that they would be allowed. You've heard the presentation a couple of times, you know, Denise is ready to answer questions, but in our opinion, with this being a second reading, this is ready for final adoption.
Counsel, questions?
I move that we...
Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public, for the benefit of the public, who may not have been here at previous two meetings, this simply perpetuates the city's incentive program for residential and commercial builders to build according to green or environmentally sensitive standards, and the companion resolution sets a fee, a fee reduction incentive for those who build according to green standards. Is that a fair... So we'll open the meeting to the public, and if the public wished to be heard on agenda item number eight. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Roll call, approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine.
You're out of order back there.
Just a box.
Agenda item number nine, resolution approving the fee schedule for the green development incentive program. Mr. Landon?
As per the last ordinance, this is a resolution that sets what that incentive will be, and it's $300 for residential, whether that's new construction or remodeling, and $1,000 for commercial. Once again, new construction and remodeling. It also sets a maximum budget amount of $10,000, so it's kind of first come, first served. Once the $10,000 has been spent, then the incentive goes away.
Has that ever happened, Mr. Landon?
I don't believe we've ever hit $10,000, no. I've confirmed that, no, we have never hit $10,000.
I almost wish we would. Counsel, questions? Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public, and if the public wished to be heard on agenda item number nine. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. We'll offer the public an opportunity to speak on either one before we ask whether council wishes to remove anything. Agenda item number 10 is a approval of a continuing service contract for professional services, and number 11 is the purchase of some submersible water pump, water, wastewater pumps. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on the consent agenda items 10 through 11? Nobody's interested in wastewater pumps? Seeing nobody approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
If not, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. It's an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three
Good evening, members of the City Council. I'm Elizabeth Robinson from Community Cats of Palm Coast. I am joined today by Melissa Rock, the Operations Manager of the Flagler Humane Society, and more than 20 animal advocates that have come out tonight. I'm presenting you with a petition. The petition asks to bring legal status to the feral cats that are already here, and to allow trap, neuter, and return to reduce the feral cat population in a humane and effective way. The petition has 3,000 signatures that have been collected by 20 businesses and organizations, including Shelton Veterinary Clinic, Community Animal Clinic, Palm Coast Pet Clinic, Flagler Integrated Veterinary Center, Pine Lakes Animal Hospital, Flagler Animal Hospital, the Flagler Humane Society, Safari Rescue, Pet Paradise, Pet Styles Grooming, Animal House Grooming, and Palm Coast Pet Spa. I've taken the time to read this list, because many of these places have not merely displayed the petition. They have kept it for months at their registration desks, explaining TNR to their clientele. This petition is a demonstration of not only the public sentiment, but also how unified the animal welfare community is on this issue. Trap, neuter, and return is a well-documented protocol that is being embraced by municipalities around the country. Cities are replacing trap and kill with TNR. They are redirecting municipal funds or sanctioning, sanctioning volunteer-run TNR programs, and they are saving taxpayer money and getting results. Jacksonville, Port Orange, and Deland now have TNR programs. TNR is endorsed by the Humane Society of the United States, and by the ASPCA, and regionally by Concerned Citizens for Animal Welfare. The Flagler Humane Society has been able to get a $25,000 grant recently to TNR cats in Flagler Beach. Flagler Beach is going to go a long way toward addressing their feral cat problem at no cost to taxpayers. That money would not have been awarded for Palm Coast, as the city code creates no legal status for feral cats. We understand that Mr. Landon has asked the Flagler Humane Society to put together a meeting on TNR recently, and that is a really positive start. But we are here tonight to impress upon you how strongly we want action on this issue. Animal advocates are not going to give up, and they will not accept the status quo anymore. The absence of a TNR program is inhumane, and it's costly. What you're doing is not working, gentlemen, and we urge you to adopt a new approach to an old problem.
15 seconds.
I'm done?
Thank you. Good time.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Next speaker, on any topic. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Mr. Landon, you're going to...
Yes, if I may.
Please.
You know, the city has actually supported TNR programs in the past, but it's, it takes a, a community effort, if you will. It can't be just the city, it can't be individuals, and there are other sides of this story that we've seen here at City Council that, that also need to be included in those discussions. I just received correspondence from the Humane Society today, asking that we set something up in January, so I actually look forward to it. I think it would be a, a good thing to do, if we could figure out a way to, to work together on, on this issue. And appreciate the approach of the group tonight, and I think if we stay positive, hopefully we can come up with something that works for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, we'll start with you, sir.
Nothing to offer, your honor.
Mr. Lewis?
Nothing.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Last Wednesday, I attended the, my first TPO meeting, Bill.
Lucky you, huh?
And they gave me a reprieve, because I don't have a December meeting, which is nice, I suppose. But to report back, all 22 counties and cities have sent back their inter-local agreement to the TPO, and they're hoping for our January 22nd meeting that will be integrated into the TPO, will have governor's approval, and will be officially join the TPO at that, at that time.
And you'll be able to vote.
Then I'll be able to vote. Oh, and Commissioner Revels is the representative from Flagler County.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Nothing to offer, your honor.
And I have, I hope everybody saw the rocket go off tonight at about 5:40, 5:41. I guess they finally got it off out of Cape Canaveral, Cape Kennedy. Ah, discussion by City Attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Ah, how nice. Discussion by the City Manager of matters not on the agenda.
Well, that was quick. Just, we do have our Christmas parade and holiday activities prior to that, including Fun for Kids out at Central Park. All right, help me out, I was, this went faster than I expected.
December 14?